Made an order, everyone please stand on the side and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ashley, we have an oath of office, please.
Use your right hand and repeat after me. I, your first and last name.
I, Joseph Chastel.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the city charter.
That I will support the city charter.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
And I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of an office of council member.
The duties of the office of council member.
In the city of Croxton.
In the city of Croxton.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
And take your stuff.
Okay, it's time for the open forum. If anyone would like to address. Sorry, jumping ahead. Thank you, Ashley. Roll call, please.
Brecken.
Here.
Flock. Alt. Hidma.
Cap.
Chastel.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Graves.
Here.
Cavalier.
Here.
Okay, now it's time for the open forum. If anyone would like to address council and any issue not already on tonight's agenda, may come to the podium, state your first, last name and address, please. Hearing nothing from the chambers, anybody on the phone bridge, please.
Nobody on the phone bridge, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, no presentations. This brings us to the agenda. Does anyone wish to add anything to tonight's agenda? Have a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Clayton, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joseph, thank you. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Brecken.
Aye.
Alt.
Aye.
Hidma.
Aye.
Chastel.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Graves.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. This brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from tonight's consent agenda? Can I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda? Thank you. Don is our second by Derek. Roll call, please.
Brecken.
Aye.
Alt.
Aye.
Hidma.
Aye.
Chastel.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Graves.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. On the regular agenda. Uh, reports, Jeff, anything?
No, Your Honor. Everything, I made a few updates about an hour ago. I emailed the council an updated capital request and prioritization sheet. Uh, I, there were some items added. Uh, there have been some minor changes to the budget for the workshop this evening, but generally speaking, all is well. I would like to just simply say, you know, as many, everyone is aware, this is my last meeting with the city of Croxton, and I'd just like to extend my thanks to staff, council, and residents, uh, for all the work that's been put in. You know, we've got a very solid staff, and, you know, I think Croxton does have a very bright future in front of it. So, thank you for the support of the council, and thank you for everything over the last 14 months.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Don, anything?
I'd like to congratulate Joseph for, Chastel for, uh, welcoming to the council. Welcome. Thank you.
Uh, Derek, anything?
Uh, I'll second that. Congratulations, Joseph. Uh, Jeff, we're gonna miss you. You did a lot in a short, short period of time that you were here.
Yes, sir.
Wendy?
Welcome.
Uh, Morgan?
Um, we had the EDA meeting, was it last week? Um, and we spent a lot of time talking about daycare and just looking at, we had discussed one plan and just will be moving forward and discussing other ideas of how we can help with the daycare crisis here. Um, welcome, Joseph. Glad to have a new neighbor. Um, and thank you, Jeff, for everything that you have done for us.
Right, thanks, Morgan. I hate to put you on the spot, Joseph, but you're up. Anything?
Glad to be here. Before you're working with everyone, and thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Henry?
Welcome, Joseph. Thanks, Jeff, for all that you did.
Thank you. Clayton?
Congratulations, Joseph. Thanks. Best of luck.
Thank you, sir.
I guess first day of school, so, you know, once again, look out for students, stop for school buses. Uh, also attended cheetah last week or week four. Morgan filled it in a little bit. Also attended, uh, welcome home session. It was out at UMC with, uh, all the new students and students also that are coming back. That was a good time. They had a welcome session in Keel, and then they had a kind of a picnic out in, uh, um, the gazebo area, so it was a good time. Also, uh, liked to welcome Joseph. Thank you. And Jeff, thank you for your time. You've, uh, done a lot since you've been here as far as on, uh, budget then. Uh, much appreciated, and I wish you the best.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, that's all I have. Uh, just a reminder, we do got a budget meeting tonight following, uh, council, so nothing else come before council. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Call the council budget workshop to order for Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, and this is basically a draft operational budget. So, I will put it in Jeff's hands. And see where we're at.
Let me pull up the, we've got about three sheets here. I emailed last week. I emailed the council, uh, some sheets this afternoon. As I mentioned, I did email some, an updated capital request and prioritization sheet. Uh, the initial request for capital, uh, for the city, uh, from the departments is one, not counting, uh, not counting anything that's going to be bonded. As an example, the Sherman Road project is slated for 2026. Uh, the departmental requests are 1.9 million, approximately 360,000 of that has been identified as a firm cost, uh, that being items, police squad, uh, parks and mower leases, we are already obligated to pay those leases, uh, the IT servers, equipment that have been identified at a previous meeting and explained by Joel, uh, in order for us to move through the unique terrain of the buy, corporate buyout in the IT realm and the costs that we're looking at moving forward with that. And I've identified the turnout here for the fire department as non-negotiable. Those have a 10-year life expectancy, and we have to move forward. Um, the rest are subject to prioritization, which leaves us with 1.5, roughly 1.5 million in requests in order to prioritize through. If we fund all of those requests, we're pretty close to 1 million. We're 999,039 dollars short of fully funding the capital requests. Uh, there is, this is a preliminary budget. We do have some, next, uh, tomorrow, we have a meeting where we should be finding out what our health insurance costs are going to be doing for the upcoming year. As an example, we've anticipated 10% for preliminary budget for healthcare increases. Last year, if you remember, it was at 7.8%. So, we wanted the budget slightly high. Uh, the preliminary numbers we've gotten are to expect about an eight or 8.2% increase in healthcare. Across the board, wages, uh, primarily union contract driven. Uh, across the board, we're looking at approximately 5.5% increase in wages, and that is contract driven. Uh, other items, I'm, as you go through the departments in the sheet that I provided, you'll, um, I'm very pleased to say that many of the departments have had significant reductions in their ask. Um, some, some has been moved around. Some of the larger increases, you'll see week control shows a 585% increase, but when you look at dollars, it's not a significant number of dollars. That was increased from $1,500 to $10,000. So, while it's a high percentage, it's not a lot of dollars, although we do recog, recognize that dollars matter. Every dollar matters. Uh, the, the total, this budget, that $999,000 shortfall is found, foundation is keeping the tax levy at the same dollar amount as last year. Our tax capacity did not change significantly. I just got an email from the county today. The difference between our tax capacity from last year and this year is less than $60,000. It did go up, but it's only a small amount. So, if we keep the same dollars, we'll go from about a 93% of capacity. My anticipation will be to improve about a 92% uh, rate. Again, some of the items are negotiable. I did provide the council with a sheet of some of the more prominent items, uh, options for either revenue optimization or program cuts. If we, I would look at needing to cut. As likely at current numbers, the, let me go back to my sheet. We would only be able to fund about $800,000 in total capital out of the 1.9 requested. This al- already includes a transfer from water to general fund of $250,000. Uh, that's been, that was done last year as well as part of the budget. Uh, I don't want to tap, while the water does have reserves that can, that are there, it's not proven for us to tap that, given the work that we're looking at moving forward. Uh, one of the, the primary projects that we're looking at in public works next year is a rehab, uh, Sherman and Sheridan Roads. The estimated cost is 2.6 million. Estimated bond payment on that is 220,000, which would be payable in '27. Uh, the water and sewer would pay lion's share of that bond payment in special assessments. Uh, the levy obligation for that first year would be $22,000. And when you combine that with the anticipated bond needed for the industrial park infrastructure, uh, EDA is expecting to hear back on that grant from US EDA in the next couple of months, uh, because the industrial park infrastructure would be straight bond, that's the match for the 6.6 project. 3.3 in grants, 3.3 was the original number, but because it was over a year ago, uh, we bumped that to a $3.5 million, anticipating inflation. The anticipated bond payment on that would be 290,000, which would lead to 2027 having a levy obligated debt payment of 312,000. I bring that up because that is so that the council can have a, an idea of what our future obligations are as we continue to fund. So, we don't want to create too many ongoing obligations as we go through. Um, the anticipated levy obligation for debt increases over the next 10 years. Uh, by 2030, we're looking at 511,000, and by 2035, we're looking at 649,000 in estimated bond payments. That would be levy obligated. Um, so, every, that would require cuts from operating and capital moving forward. That does not include any additional capital outside of major projects and roadwork. Every year, the increase, uh, every year is roughly two, between two and four million, depending on the year, for various road infrastructure, water, sewer projects in the city to help bring us up past, uh, bring up our infrastructure that has already been beyond, deemed beyond useful life for, at high risk. Uh, the CIP that was handed out a few meetings ago, uh, from A to S, if the council will remember, has $108 million in capital needs beyond useful life, with about 45 million of that being critical. So, what we've tried to do over the next 10 years is, is address those, the 45 million in critical need, infrastructure repairs, and that's where that bond payment, the levy obligated, uh, special assessment, rule of thumb that was used in assessing that is water and sewer were 30% each for the pro, each project, uh, and based on our special assessment policy, 30% in special assessments, which would leave 10% of the total project cost, uh, for the levy obligation. An exception to that is the Highway 2 North project in 2029. Uh, that does not have the opportunity for special assessments because the nature of Highway 2 North is that the city owns all of the adjacent properties because we've got front of roads on both sides.
Like on Highway 2 West.
Just south of, south of the university, Walmart area. Yes, west. Uh, so, that would, that, the levy obligation for that project would be about 132,000, which is significantly higher because it doesn't have that special assessment ability, uh, to come across. So, that's kind of the, the overview of what's coming down the pipe. One of the, some of the items. So, we do have several items that are possible to help mitigate, uh, some of, some of the costs. Um, and I'm open to any council comments or suggestions on what was sent out.
A question. Um, what's a cop debt roof?
Pardon?
Calm debt.
Community development, the roof. The roof for the, uh, the roof for Valley Tech Park, okay?
Every configuration, same thing.
That, that actually may be a moot point. I've all, I've removed that from the primary budget. Uh, there's another anticipated project that I can't really go into any detail in at this point. It may make replacing that roof moot. Real, discussing a real estate transaction would require.
I guess my thought would be, and I can be wrong, but it would be nice to go through each department and look at their budgets there and where they stand, and go, understand exactly where that's at before moving on to capital improvement and which we need to do, um, and then start cutting things. I think I need to get a really good grasp and just having, how we've had the past, with department heads come up and talk about their budget for each department.
Most of the departments, the operating budgets.
There we go.
Uh, are fairly stable. They're, as you can see with the cover sheets provided, uh, most, and you can see the line items, most of the increases, uh, one, the mayor, mayor and council, the council went increased simply because I combined the mayor and the council with, in one, uh, but it, it had a 12.7% decrease. The grant program that the city has previously identified as 50,000 as opposed to last year's 120,000. Uh, the logic on that being, uh, it's very difficult for us to, I would believe that it would be very difficult to defend, uh, the city writing checks without judging the worthiness of the cause. Obviously, many of the, you know, we've got many worthy causes, but if we're trying to balance our budget, it's kind of hard to be the benefactor if we're driving payroll mills.
So, you're looking to eliminate the grants altogether?
Uh, in this budget, I've reduced them down to fi, from 120 to 50,000, but if we, if we don't do them at all, that would be another benefit savings. Uh, one thing I know that has been historic and is justified, like, uh, Tri Valley has, you know, does have a portion that goes to them for the buses and bus service that we have in the city, and that provides a great service, uh, there.
Is that historical or is that, I know we did that last year.
I think the last couple of years, but I think, I think, uh, Tri, you know, for the bus service is very, very important for the community. It's used a lot, and also, we also funded Golden Link. And I think that's.
Is Golden Link under that or is it under Park and Rec?
No, it was. Back in the day, it was under Park and Rec, and now it's moved over to. Back in the day, it was under parking wreck and now it's moved over to, uh, grant dollars. I, I don't know why, I think it was back in Amy's day, it was moved out of parking wreck.
Last year, do you know, or anybody, what did it?
Yeah, we'll leave it at seventy eight thousand this year.
And what was Tri Valley?
Tri Valley, I want to say is either sixteen or thirty two, if I remember service correctly.
We haven't taken any applications this year because the council has not needed that recommendation to accept them.
Those are the only two requests that we've received, but those were just normal. Through the course of normal process.
Um, Jeff, this, this is informational, we're not voting on this, correct?
Pardon?
This is informational, informational report.
Not voting on this at this time. This is informational based on what we have as a tentative budget right now. Including, we had twenty six expenditures column includes capital, which is a sixty, it's a sixteen percent increase over previous, over the previous year. But the previous year did not include capital in twenty five. So we have about a, we're actually probably about a two hundred thousand dollar cut from last year operating, based on the capital requests that we have.
I re- I remember, uh, talking at length with you, um, about being proactive in, in budgets, sort of planning ahead. So to, to transition, uh, in a city like, like Crex did, from being reactive to proactive, which is hard to do, because you inherit from other people and you pass that on to the next person. So congratulations. But, uh, but to plan accordingly for the future means to not only analyze what we're doing now, but where we think we're going to be, which I think is essential. Uh, and you know, when I, when I, and it's, it's hard for me, I don't know about the other members here. When you're, when you're, you have a great background in this and you, you, you've built this up, but without seeing that as we talk about it, it's easy to get lost in that, with the numbers, because you know, we can flip from one spreadsheet to another. It's also probably harder for the people in the audience who are, even though we have some basics here. Where I'm leading, where I'm going with this is, if, you know, if we pull out specific items, which a lot of, I mean, this is, you know, essential services, e- essential items to run. I mean, and you, you can, we could talk about our wants in, in our, in our needs, right? Try to break those two things down. But when I look at things such as, uh, which are needed, a two thousand twenty Ford police interceptor needed, uh, Ford police repairs needed for an amount of eight thousand six hundred dollars plus. Those are things that are needed. So my question is this, um, as, as we look at these needs, was there a plan put in place that's proactive to note, these vehicles are going to cost, you're going to need this maintenance? Are we planning for that in the future? Because that, that, that process can be applied to any of the things that are on this, on these pages. So let me just stop there for a minute. Just, is, is that in this or not?
It's not in this particular set of sheets, but there is, I do have a capital planning sheet that has a twenty year horizon. Unfortunately, we're not in a position to be able to fund that and our critical needs, our current critical needs at this juncture. Uh, the way it's broken out in that ca- in that planning sheet is to fund every year based on life expectancy of capital assets, expected life expectancies. And if something has a hundred thousand dollar cost and a ten year life expectancy, we set aside ten thousand dollars a year for it and move forward through that process. That would be the proactive best practices way to look at funding these iden- these items. However, we're not in a position as a city to have the reserves in place to fund that type of a capital improvement plan yet. Uh, we don't have our unassigned reserves where they need to be. And we don't, so we don't have that available funding to set aside to move forward to have that seed to move it forward yet. Uh, one of the things in the next week, we're at a meeting, Chief and I had a meeting with E D A. We're going to be putting the R P out for this week, uh, this week with the housing developments coming through, because the core to all of fixing many of our financial woes is that tax capacity and getting the growth in that tax capacity. And we have to find some significant paradigm shifts, uh, in getting more buildings built, newer buildings, so that we can grow that tax base. Uh, that would be the industrial park infrastructure, residential, updated residential housing. Anyone, if you're familiar with the real estate markets, houses generally go up in value year over year over year. And if we can maintain the same tax rate as housing goes up, it generally follows inflation. And there, that way, when inflation causes our costs to go up, we're automatically getting that additional funding. Unfortunately, our costs are going up every year, but when houses start getting past a certain point in age, every house is a little different. And if someone completely rehabs an older Victorian, then obviously its value goes up. But as houses get to an age, they stagnate in value or start declining in value. And right now, thirty two percent of our housing stock is pre nineteen forty. So it's over eighty years old, eighty five years old, and it's declining in value. And it's not getting significant rehab, it's getting minimal required rehab for habitability. And we're seeing that in our tax capacity. It's not growing. So we have to address that with new construction, so that we can change the paradigm of our revenue. We have a shrinking population, which is going, we have to address that with the industrial park, with jobs, with various things, the childcare that I know E D A and many members of this council have been working very hard on, uh, so that we can retain population where we are. So in the meantime, it's one that we have to redefine. Or in our case, perhaps, define what are our core services, what are our required services? And how do we fund them and go forward and attempt to rebuild that? So in answer to your question, yes, we, there is a plan to go proactive. We're just not in a position to put that into action yet. Okay, so, um, with that. With that, I would say we are we can fund our operating as is presented. The sum up the line items will be decreasing as we get better information, because my belief is to budget expenditures slightly high, revenues slightly low, uh, as a conservative approach. And as we get more information moving forward, again, tomorrow we'll have our healthcare information, which will assist us in guiding that portion. How, some of the i- the biggest items are is how do we address our capital? How do we address? And at what point do we cut off the capital so that we can reestablish some of our reserves? We are in better condition this year than we were last year. Our twenty three, our numbers from twenty three, because we were able to get, uh, the one point one million reimbursement from the Ag Innovation Campus Project. So that was a significant shot in the arm and a booster, uh, to our reserves. But I would caution to not not spend frivolously, because we're in better condition than we were, because we're still not where we need to be.
How critical is that parking lot behind City Hall? And I think you got, what, eighty grand on that?
I have eighty thousand on that, um. Parks, our public works did put thatch over some of the worst. You can take it back here, it's not that bad. To drive over at this point, however, Chuck is out, uh, out today, but it's, we have identified that we suspect there is a void underneath the parking lot. Uh, the, the sump hump underneath the city hall has been short cycling. And if you know, walk to the back of the building, you'll see they've tried to mitigate that by putting a piece of pipe attached to the outlet to pull that away from the building. Because it was going through, it was going through the concrete and the siphon going through, so it was short side, short cycling, so I, I would give that a higher priority than I did last year. Although I can't speak to the condition underneath the pavement. We, we have not had a, not had an analysis onto it. We've just identified that when we put the pipe up, the short cycling seems to diminish from the drainage, so.
So if I'm understanding what you said earlier, if the operating costs there, taking out capital improvement, of the other spreadsheet, it's just operating costs. If we did nothing there, we'd, we could stay where we are at our.
Operating, operating right now can be covered under the current, under the current budget, but that would significantly limit many capital requests that have been pushed off for several years.
I just want to know, like, I'm not trying to push more, right? I'm just saying this is where we are at. I'm also not saying that we do this, but I just need to know where the it is, if we were to do all of the capital improvement, which I'm also not saying that we do, but what, where would that put us then?
We did all the capital improvement, we need another million dollars.
And that would be a levy of, what, fifteen?
Pardon?
What would that levy be? Fifteen percent?
Attainable.
Okay.
I mean, we're at ninety three percent now, so.
I'm not saying that we do it. That's not where I'm at.
Right now, if we went to a hundred percent of capacity, we would only gain about three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, not saying that we do it. And that does not include, so with that and the capital improvement, that does not include needing to bond for the roads.
Pardon?
That does not include needing to bond for sewer and water and roads.
No, that does not include that bond. Uh, that bond payment wouldn't hit until twenty twenty seven, so it's not part of this budget.
May I approach the council?
Yes.
My name is Bishop Jensen. I reside at three one four Leonard Avenue, Ward one. Just from taking in all of your guys' discussion this evening, uh, it's just a, a thought. But maybe creating an advisory board to, uh, offset and handle, um, the, the complications that I feel the, the, the city council is encountering with, with budgeting. I think that if you guys sought for a public advisory board, um, those that are qualified to help budget and those that have experience in managing money, might come forward to help you guys budget this. I see that the council has been working on a budget workshop, and I would just like to say that that's a wonderful approach. Um, and, and greatly appreciated, I think, by all of your constituents citywide. That you guys are taking in the workshop and that you're trying to incorporate that in your plan and future planning. But I think that just, uh, to offset that or to assist that even, um, an advisory board, uh, developed by the public. Miss Hittma had suggested that she would like to hear all of the department heads speak um, and kind of go over all of their budgeting issues. I would then, uh, double down on that and consider an advisory board to also kind of weigh in means that as well. So that the council has both perceptions of public view and other capabilities as well as their own. That's all.
I don't know, I, I guess I, it's too bad Chuck ain't here. I'd like to get more information on that. I mean, sight on scene, you can't dig it up and find out what the issue is with that behind City Hall, but eighty thousand is a lot of money. Is that an estimate or a ballpark?
We had an estimate done last year for last year's budget. It was seventy five thousand.
And I guess I'd like to know if it's really dire straits. I mean, I hate to push stuff off, but.
I think, I think it needs to be looked at. Something that could be done wrong or whatever.
I mean, is it?
Trying to make cuts.
If it's doing structural damage to the building, that'd be a different story, but we don't know, so it'd be nice to have some of that information.
Also. Do you think Chuck would be able to like, cut in and see if there's a gap or like, it's roving anything, but?
I would be concerned, uh, with someone not experienced in building structure cutting into foundation adjacent pieces.
You're not making it if you cut into it, no fix.
Well, right, yeah, I don't, I just wonder if there's any on the back, on the backside of the building, if there's any structural damage to the building or if it's you know, I, I guess I would like answers.
Is there a way, I know that far as like the state does on highways. I've actually seen it done where they, after pouring it, they look for gaps or open spaces underneath. They, they use a chain setup. They drag and they can tell by the sound of the chain and stuff like that. So is that something that possible that could be done to asphalt?
I can't speak to that, sir. Uh, I don't know that, uh, how much spaces need, how much distance to red, to determine the resonance change.
Um, other thought, just to bring up on that counseling grants, um, usually the O C R days, the fireworks fall under that also. It was ten thousand is what they asked for last year.
I think they asked for ten, but we gave them five.
I think we gave them five, yeah.
Um, O C R days was, I believe, six thousand.
Six? I guess, yeah, I mean, I'm just back to even that. I, I would like to go budget department by department and then also looking at capital improvements. I mean, we're clearly going to have to start cutting somewhere, but before I start cutting into things, I would like.
Yeah, I agree with Morgan. I would like each department head, I mean, it's not our job to tell them what they can and cannot live without, but I would.
But it is my job to be able, Diana Erickson, to people that live here.
Yep, I would just assume each department head go through their budget with us line, line, line by line. I mean, granted, uh, salaries and para and all that is set, so we don't have to look at that, but we get down to equipment, supplies, whatever they have on their budget sheet. Thoughts?
I agree. I know that, uh, I did a cut a few years ago.
Diana Erickson. I know it's a lot of nights and it's a lot of long nights, but I, I would just like to be able to confidently speak to people. I, and I'm not taking away the work that you have done. I fully trust that. I just, if we're making cuts, I need to, I need to fully understand where everything's at.
As, as an example, um, finance as finance as many of our departments, the, each of the line items that are being discussed are already reduced. As an example, you know, janitorial supplies, the, the needs that are coming through. They have already been reduced to the point, uh, that each department is, as, as you'll see, most of the departments, if you take the capital out, are reducing their budgets.
And I, and I understand that, and I'm not asking us to go through this for me to tell them where they need to reduce this.
So, and the budget is about thirty-six hundred lines.
Fair, we've done it before.
We, we did it a couple of years ago, yeah.
I think if that's something that every, I mean, do we feel?
Well, we, you know, I guess we've had budgets on workshops on off Mondays, and so far we've had none, and I can't understand that. My understanding, I thought we were gonna have one last Monday after the special council meeting, we didn't have one.
I think it's a great idea, it, what's, what's helpful about doing something like that is everyone is focused on the same material at the same time.
Yep.
And then you can, things come out, and you, and discussions, good ideas and so on, versus people looking at different spreadsheets and wondering about what they're gonna say next versus focusing and solving. And, and I think, from your perspective, you're thinking about just being informed.
Yeah.
It's, it's not about making changes, it's just like, do I understand, it's there?
Right, because if we're saying we need to cut a million dollars, I need, I would like to know line item by line item what's in there before I can.
I agree with you.
So, would you like to start doing that on the off Mondays?
Well, you know, yes, I mean, that's.
Was it maybe every Monday?
Hmm?
Is it two years ago, we met every Monday?
I think even last year, we would meet.
It's almost like that, two or three years ago.
Yeah.
We would meet on our off Mondays up until, um, we kinda had an idea where the levy was gonna be set, so.
We have to have that in by the.
Thirtieth of this month.
We have to have that set by the next council meeting.
Yep.
Uh, we don't need the, we need a preliminary levy by the cer, by the thirtieth.
And again, this year is a little different than last year because we do have capital already listed in the departments. So that, a lot of the increases that you're seeing are from capital, as an example, the police, if I take the capital.
And that's perfect, because then if we're going through, then people can point that out as we go department.
Yeah, if you take the capital out, that takes, takes away lion's share of any increases that are there, and at that point, any increase is simply contractual wage, para, health insurance. Uh, again, health insurance is budgeted at ten percent increase, wages are by the contract. Uh, just about, as an example, our uniform allowances for the police dropped eleven percent. The, um, pretty much everything else is flat in our police budget outside of wage guided items. Looking right now, if we look from just below the health insurance and run down for twenty line items, it's almost every line item is a zero percent increase.
Yep.
So, we, you know, I, I would just like to stress to the council that the department heads have already cut where they, where can be.
I'm not asking to go through this to do the cut, I'm saying if we're making big cuts everywhere else, I need to fully be able to go through that, and, and if everybody else would like to move on and just, because I know you sent out those suggestions and I thank you and I think that's very, I, I just feel like you want us to move forward with suggestions and I'm just not comfortable with that, without going line item by line item for all three thousand line items. But. Is that something we can do?
I guess for the last two budget cycles, we've pretty much, each department had, department had gone through this. And we would work, have on our off Mondays take one or, you know, if we, smaller budgets, yeah, we could cram a few in, but larger budgets, we'd probably do one or two. And, I mean, we don't wanna be here until ten o'clock at night, we get that. I'm sure department heads don't wanna be here neither, but I think, I agree with Morgan, if we gotta find these kinds of cuts or.
Are, are we gonna be doing, looking to do a special session for the preliminary levy then also?
Okay, um, just to remind the council, I T and building have already been
Yep.
identified. Uh, I'll work, I can work with the chief tomorrow morning and build the schedule for department heads to finish and round out the rest of the departments.
As I mean, it's frustrating, I guess in the past, we started talking about budgets and having, uh, workshops and on off Mondays. We started this way back in August, you're, we're already in September and it's frustrating on my end that, you know, it's been requested that on our off Mondays, I have a budget workshop and we really haven't had anything, so.
I mean, if we're, I, I mean, in the end, there is, there's the ones and the needs, right? I mean, we have to fund water, we have to fund sewer, we have to fund roads, police, fire, pay our contractual obligations, but I mean, if we're talking about cutting that, I mean, that can be in a department or an entire service, just something that I, I just wanna be fully informed.
And the goal, has, the goal has been to identify where we can so that we can rebuild our reserves.
Yep.
Um, rebuilding our reserves, we're likely a million and a half, and I'll defer to Holly on the dollars. Um, billion and a half to two million dollars still required to get us to our cash reserve policy. And so this, this budget, again, does not contribute to reserves. That's why I provided the recommended enhancements or cuts to the council, and as I've, as I've mentioned prior, line, the circumstances we are in, line items will not solve the financial problems the city is incurring, uh, we are looking at program level cuts or program level changes. So, in order to get us back, otherwise we're simply spinning, the city will just be spinning its wheels and never seeing an incre, any improvement in that reserve outside of any, uh, unan- unanticipated or fluke uh, revenue enhancements, so I.
No, and I get that, I'm just saying.
You know, to quote, uh, Councilman Ward one, I would rather be proactive and have a plan to rebuild our reserves than to every year look at how, what else can we kick down the road so that we can balance things. Uh, the, the three point three to three point five million we need for the industrial park, at the time that was applied to, applied for, the city believed they had that cash in the bank. And the audit came out and that money wasn't, not in, set aside. Uh, so, that's, the goal would be to get us in a position where we have that ability, because even with that project, even with bonding three point five million dollars for our match, we still have to flow the expenses for the other three point three, because the grant is a reimbursement grant. And it's a federal reimbursement grant, and in the current political climate, anticipated, instead of a thirty day turnaround, we're looking at probably a hundred and twenty day turnaround, uh, for those reimbursements. So that, if we had a fully funded reserve, that project would not be in danger or up for a discussion, but because we do not have fully funded reserves, that project becomes very problematic when you get to the details of how do we fund the amounts that are reimbursed if we have to wait a hundred and twenty days to get those reimbursements back, when we only have about a six month build cycle by weather and, in our climate. That, that becomes very problematic when you get to the details. So, it, I, I can't stress enough, the individual line items that I recognize, every dollar adds up and every dollar matters. The, the circumstance that we're in is we have a twenty year declining population, we've got a twenty year declining tax base, and we can no longer be all things to all people. We have to have, the city has to have a paradigm shift in its view in how we provide services to our residents.
So, before, thank you, uh, for clarifying that a little bit, Jeff. Um, i- is there a way, if we go item by item, the three thousand, whatever, lines of that? It, it, it seems like that's one thing to do, to discuss, to see where the money goes, just informational, just to kinda chill on it, right? Savor that for a minute and understand when the hard decisions have to be made. But on the other hand, there should be another piece that goes on, which is, as you identified very clearly, and other people have too, who've come up, that there's a declining population, right? And that, and that is also linked to reduced monies coming in, right? To, 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 to change your, 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 your wants, you can actually purchase those things, you can fund those things. So, so my question is, is maybe it's just a statement regarding that, that latter part, is what are we doing? Or is there something that we can do as we go through this budget to also say, all right, a gentleman came up, talked about advisory committee, uh, citizens, um, of, of ideas to help us figure out ways to improve, to increase the population for which is in tandem with increasing monies coming in, but other ways we're not thinking about in this group here. Um, and I would, I would ask that we spend some of our time thinking about that as a strategy to, which has to occur.
One of the things that I've done over the last four months, I've reached out to a couple of companies, uh, trying to embrace a future mindset. Uh, limited success, but worth, still worthy of pursuing. Um, we have, uh, one company that's looking at putting solar, uh, batteries over next to our wastewater ponds, we have about forty acres that would pay significantly for rent on that land. Uh, we need to update our housing, as I, I can attest personally, and when I came to the area, housing in this, in our city is very difficult to come by, and we're not, we haven't, we've issued three building permits in a year and a half. Maybe four for housing, uh, we need to put that, we need to exponentially increase that, which is why we're looking at the R F P for housing, housing project on the twenty acre parcel. Uh, that would be forty-seven homes, that would be a hundred and fifty new people, but the taxes on forty-seven market value homes would be a significant boost shot in the arm to our tax base. Uh, along with that, you know, the, the work that's being done with the childcare models, the pod models, and trying to get that moving in, that I know Councilmember Hibma and Councilmember Alton have been working on, those are very important things that will help to draw people in so that we can reverse that trend of population shift. Uh, identifying industries that are going to be growing over the next twenty years as opposed to simply identifying businesses. Uh, data centers are with, the growth of A I, data centers are popping up all over North Dakota. Northern climates are very conducive because the number one need for data centers is air conditioning, because they put off a lot of heat. My, uh, some of the recent advancements, they don't need as much water for their cooling systems as they did in the past. And so I've reached out to a couple of companies, uh, to query as to whether or not there would be any interest for data centers in our region. Uh, North Dakota, there's a couple of communities, one is a community of about eighteen hundred, uh, in North Dakota. They have a wind farm nearby them, which provides them with a great surplus of power. And so the data centers found them. We have two power providers here, we have two fiber internet, uh, providers here. So, that's what I'm talking about with the paradigm shift, we need to change what is going to be a growth opportunity, what's going to continue growing over the next twenty years, instead of the same, the same thing that every Midwestern town in the United States is trying to do, is to rehash and rebuild where they've always been. If we can embrace that future move, that A I move, the, something along that, that's going to provide that long term stability, provide high paying jobs, provide, and it, it, it becomes the building and they will come. Um, the question is, how do we do that? And provide that infrastructure, given where we are? So, uh, again, I think the, the foundations are being laid. Housing project for the twenty acres is, I think is gonna be a very good thing for the city. E D A has another eighteen income limited housing, uh, project that's going behind Casey's, I think that just that project, eighteen homes, that's more than fourfold the number of hot, permits we've put forward in the last eighteen months. So I think that we are getting some traction moving forward, and if both of those projects go, that's an exponential increase in our housing from where we, from where we've been. So I would anticipate that in, moving forward, the budget constraints will be, will be looser and not tightening as they are right now. Again, right now, our, we really have to, in the, in the interim, we have to identify what are the core services that we want to provide to our citizens, that we can provide to our citizens. We can't continue to do the same things we did when we had nine thousand population. We don't have the same revenues, we, but yet, if you look at our budgets, all of our programs are still in place. There's never been an adjustment to those programs. And I would suspect the reason is because downward adjustments in programs are usually very unpopular. Uh, there are going to, and, but there are going to need to be significant changes in how we address things moving forward in order to stay viable.
Bishop Johnson, Ward one, three and four Leonard. The, the purpose behind the recommendation for an advisory board to, isn't to go, you know, line by line with the advisory board. I think the city intends to do that here in this council already, it sounds like you guys have developed a plan for that. But the advisory board, I think, would grant, and I, I think Ms. Hibbs is showing the most concern in this, um, just the public response in which you guys will receive and how, you know, budgeting, essentially this preliminary, um, increase on everybody's taxes or levy that's being discussed.
Roger, just for the record, Bishop, the current proposal is no increase.
Okay, yeah, and, and that's right, and that's, that's the fundamental idea, I think, behind all the constituents at this point, is, is we would like to see a pause on that for a minute and, and hope to see that the city, you know, redirects what they're doing more towards what you guys are bringing up and working on, you know, housing, even down to daycare, which is, it seems like not a city problem, but in retrospect is a city issue.
So, and, and I've had a few, I like, just want everyone to be aware, like, when we're talking about this, the E D A does meet the last Tuesday of every month at seven A M, where we do discuss a lot of this, which is a bu, a committee of community members, uh, where daycare is a high priority. So there are different committees that are out there that are meeting and working on this stuff, and then it gets brought to the city once there is a plan or what that is, so. Sometimes if it's not discussed here, just keep watch of what K R O X is putting out of different meetings, because the, I mean, the last Tuesday of every month at seven A M, that's when the E D A meets, and these are subjects that the E D A is discussing and trying to find plans and come up with that to then bring to the city. So that's how that kind of stuff works there, and that is a group of, uh, community members.
Yeah, most definitely, but the E D A does still have boundaries and limits to it, I think an advisory board created by the council or the city, um, would do you beneficial in insight? And two of the things I hear right now are, uh, we need to figure out a plan to save money to put new streets in our, in our decaying neighborhoods. Um, but nobody's investing in the houses, and so that's why, you know, the levy, or the money isn't coming in. Well, people are gonna wanna see roads before they see redevelopment of those properties. Well, people are going to want to see roads before they see redevelopment of those properties. And that's just a matter of fact, and and I think an advisory board would help bring that up or reiterate that in priority as far as that goes. And then the second one too is, is we talk about, you know, necessities of what, what makes us interested and how we look at that, you know, down to even our simple things like a bus service. And and that just being loosely brought up in in contingents of maybe something we need to let go of, but in reality, we have a bus manufacturer here. And us not having a city bus here would would probably reflect heavily on all of that due time and process. And so I think a community advisory board, you know, that isn't just devoted to housing or isn't just devoted to economics, but is built of just genuine outside constituent concern and transparency, I think would benefit the council tremendously in making these choices, way past what the EDA is going to provide at this point, I think, with just their charted topics that they have.
There's more, I'd recommend you coming to the meetings and see what they have.
And I would be happy to attend more meetings as we go forward, but I will let you know that ultimately those things still have charted paths and that things like the bus aren't really brought into it in full. And so like, if we're going to bring the bus up or any topic for that matter, you know, police department, I think Joseph shared with us earlier as a, as a beginning example, with the, with the vehicles that are used, all of that, I think it just an advisory board would be greatly beneficial to every councilwoman and man's perspective. Thanks.
So, well, moving forward, I guess I'm looking for, you know, some council direction, what do you want to do here? I mean, you know, Jeff laid out kicking the can down the road, it's not really an option. Do we look at some hard facts or programming or departments or is that future discussion? For the, you know, before we gotta actually set our, you know.
I just, I mean, I just feel like we need to have a couple of long nights. A couple of like, or like, I'm even just looking at like, the EDA community, I don't know, some line items on here that I have some questions on, like.
I do too. So I would just soon, you know, I I get, you know, we've done it in the past, I don't know why we can't continue to.
And and I'm going to throw this out and you can all hate me, so I get that and look at me nasty, I get this. But it, would it be worth having meetings also because we have a lot of departments and we need to make at least a preliminary decision before the end of September? To maybe meet twice a week and you can all hate me? I I see the looks that I'm getting, but.
Well, you know, you gotta do what you gotta do, I don't got a problem with it because, you know, basically when we had budget on off Mondays, we started back in August in the past and we haven't done that, so.
Maybe part of the answer to that is is the time, because time will drive you in terms of when, when we want our answers. So part of this is informational, so we feel informed by what we see before you can make decisions. So what's, where are we on time, when, when do decisions?
Preliminary has to be September thirtieth, sign our
Name of the levy.
Preliminary, so how the preliminary levy works is we can set a levy, it can always go down, it just can't go up. So we have to at least, I know the goal is to, it to be zero, but if you say zero, then it is, then it is, you can't go up. And then you have to have the plan.
So being smart money is it's going to be at a hundred percent when it's at the preliminary, we're going to have.
But we've done that before and that is not fun. Well, that's why.
Some of the problem with that is when you get your proposed tax statements in the mail, citizens don't realize that it's proposed and when they see such a high increase, it creates a lot of.
Yep.
Yeah, that that does create a large, right now, the tax capacity for twenty twenty six, this is estimated, number subject to change, this is as of eleven fifty three this morning from the county. Our tax capacity is four million eight hundred sixty eight thousand seven ninety two, so roughly four million eight hundred sixty eight thousand. Our levy that we are looking currently is four million four hundred eighty six one seventy one, so there, there's roughly four hundred thousand, give or take, in room between the ma, between the tax capacity and where we currently are. To speak to what council member Hibba mentioned, if the council choose at the end of the, at the end of the month, my recommendation, just simply because it is a hard ceiling, to put two to three hundred thousand on that and then build backwards from that to the one seventy one. It it creates some flexibility. As we've identified last year, there are always last minute items that pop up that you don't anticipate as numbers move through, so. But right now, the budget can be balanced, operating with limited capital, but would not contribute to our reserves, which is actually a better place than we were last year.
So we're letting.
Last year, the budget could not be balanced at the same levy and required a significant increase, which no one wanted. I guarantee not a single resident wanted and I'm, I would feel very confident in saying no one on the dais was designing this either. So we are in a better position this year than we were last year, and a lot of that is due to the department heads having gone through their budgets with fine toothed combs. And even as such, there are items in the capital that department heads have told me that this is something that we can likely move on for enough, for next year, so that we do have some room.
If if we can have a better plan of what departments we were going to review on one night and be able to see the budget ahead of time so that we could review it and have our questions ready for that meeting, then I think maybe we could avoid doing multiple meetings a week, there's still going to be long nights, but
Right now, what we have, what we have on the spreadsheet that was sent out to the council, each department head has provided, those are the numbers that have been provided. They've sat down with Holly and myself and and the department heads and we've gone through line by line, every line item that's there.
So that is the most up to date, crystal clear, no mistakes?
So what you, what you, what you have and I can, there were some capital changes that were made and all that, I can send those out as soon as the meeting's over, I can send out the exact version that I have.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if we knew, like, let's say next Monday, we're going through these three departments and we just know it's going to be long nights, I I would prefer to do that, I mean, either way, I would like, I'm so sorry. But I would like to go through those because I know it's not my job to make the cuts, but it is my job to report back and give people the reason why.
Yeah, we can go through a few of them that are nondepartmental this evening, if the council desires. Professional services, elections.
Sure.
Those items, we can go through because they they wouldn't, they're nondepartmental. Elections is about a seven hundred dollar increase over twenty four, which is the last year that we had elections. And a sing, the lion's share of that is election judge salaries increased by about seventeen hundred dollars. We had, I put seven hundred and fifty dollars in overtime for regular salaries, that's Ashley's time because there are many times, several days during the election cycle, she is forced to incur overtime, particularly election day, because she goes over the eight hours a day, she puts in about sixteen hours on that day. So that was never previously budgeted, or I can't say never, but it was not previously budgeted for the last several cycles. So that reinstated that. FICA contributions, it's a mathematical, so that went up a couple hundred dollars as part of that. The same with Medicare contributions. The miscellaneous supplies for the elections reduced by twenty five, twenty five hundred dollars over the last election cycle. Postage went up two hundred, we all know the post office likes to raise the rates about twice a year lately. Office supplies remain the same at five hundred. Legal publication notices, we put five hundred previously, it was two hundred and ten in the previous cycle. We're still evaluating what our new newspaper is going to be charging us for that, that will likely come down. And the hall rental was budgeted at eight hundred and that's remained staying, we're still under contract with that, so that's the same as previous. I'm jumping back to twenty four because that was the last year that we had an election, last year we only paid the county subscription fees and a hall rental holder fee. But for twenty six, we've got fifty thousand nine hundred eighty eight dollars budgeted compared to fifty thousand one thirteen. So we've only gone up about eight hundred dollars in elections overall for twenty six on a fifty thousand dollar budget, so that's a less than two percent increase. Anyone has any questions on elections?
Well, there is no way around an election, you gotta do it.
Yeah.
So, professional services.
Question on the elections though, are are more people doing the mail in ballot, I mean, does that affect anything?
Uh, we still have to staff, we still have to staff the polls, we still have to pay for the polls, we're still paying the same fees for contractual to the county, so it really doesn't significantly change until you have a high percentage of people emailing that, that, uh, that would not significantly change our expenses. Professional services, general professional fees was not previously budgeted in twenty four and thus not twenty five. In researching this year, as we look through, the county property assessment fee is where that actually came from, last year, no one, because of turnover in staff, no one was able to identify that cost, but this year, so that, that's an addition over the previous year, simply because it was not budgeted last year, however, it was an expense. Audit and accounting services for, going to fifty, it's fifty four thousand proposed for twenty six. That is straight from the proposal that we got from our auditors. Audit services are getting to be very pricey because auditors with yellow book experience are very hard to come by and as we found out last year, our auditors cut short their engagement, they, we had a three year engagement, they cut their engagement short by a year because they didn't have the staff to be able to service our audit. If council would remember, we had a very difficult find, time even finding firms that were willing to bid to do our audit. So that is, it is a twenty percent increase, but that is straight from the, the proposal. Legal, uh, we've.
Jeff? Question about this and in the, in the other parts of the spreadsheet. No more processes, do we do bids when, when, when it's above a certain amount?
Pardon?
Do we do bids when it's above a certain amount for, for anything?
General, general is we get at least three quotes. If it, professional services, we normally will do bid, put an RFP out for bids, sealed bids and bring them in at that point, open them up. State statute requires us to do sealed bids at a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. But as a matter of practice, we do that at lower amounts, exceptions being for single source providers and others. However, auditing and legal are exempt.
So sealed anything above one hundred seventy five thousand?
Above one seventy five.
And what about, what's the, what's the value that you have to do a bid for? Is it ten thousand dollars or?
Uh, it's best practices, always get three quotes for no matter how much regardless, unless it's an incidental expense. If we use office supplies, it would cost, it's a, it's judgment call, is it going to cost us more to go out and get three bids than the amount that we're going to save? So if we're, if we're going out and buying pens or general, general office supplies, incidentals, we'll usually just go on Amazon and place an order because we know it's relatively competitive. And if we took the staff time to go out, get three quotes, go through a formal process, we would spend more in staff time than we would save.
So thus, when we look at this spreadsheet, that is the assumption that bids are taking place for each of those items and.
Yes.
Thank you.
And just, just so that where we're, auditing and legal are exempt from the requirement, we still can, but they're exempt from the requirement to have an RFP. So legal, as an example, you can go with, you don't necessarily want the lowest priced attorney that you can find, you want the best attorney you can find. So that, and that's the rationale on that. Unfortunately, auditing in today's market, auditing has become a de facto single source because we posted twice for auditors and got zero bids both times. So we, it it became a de facto single source because we only ended up getting one. So, legal, this is one. We got a hundred fifty five thousand scheduled for legal expense for twenty twenty five. We're looking at one, the budget placeholder number for once is one seventy five for twenty twenty six, that's about a twelve percent increase. However, I anticipate what, as we move forward, this, this week prior to my departure, I am going to be looking at analyzing our year to date expenses on that. I know the last time I looked, we were significantly below our budgeted amounts and I believe we can probably match or possibly reduce those expenditures in the upcoming budget. Let's see, IT and community development, we've gone through, city hall.
We haven't gone through community development.
Pardon? Pardon ma'am?
You said IT and community development.
Uh, IT, I'm sorry, IT and building.
Okay.
City hall, uh, the large, it's a, there is a significant increase. Most of that is the improvements with a new AED. We have one that's out of service, out of the two that we have in city hall. The battery's no longer available and the one that we have still in use, the batteries expire next year. So we will need to purchase a new AED, eighty thousand dollars that will be a council discretion for the parking lot. And we also have util, a significant increase in utilities because it includes Tri Valley Building and the utilities associated with that, however, if that, that is anticipated to come down and if that comes down, that number would likely be significantly lower.
There is utilities with the Tri Valley Building?
Some, some limited electric and heat, we have to keep it heated.
Why?
Uh, to keep things from.
So the brick doesn't fall off the side, please.
I would say this was a structural piece.
We were, last year, we, we were surprised last year with, with the utility bill that we were not anticipating and then Chuck went in and changed the thermostat settings. Someone left the thermostat settings last year at habitable temperature, so we've lowered them down to about forty eight degrees for the winter, just to keep things from freezing up. But that will be going, that will be significantly reduced at that point, so the so at that point, the city hall, once you account for the utilities, Tri Valley coming down and other improvements and other equipment. And other improvements and other equipment. With that, that would bring it more in line with its historic value at around sixty to sixty-five thousand. Uh, twenty-two was sixty-seven thousand, uh, twenty-three actual was sixty-three thousand. Uh, twenty-four budget was fifty-nine, but that included some numbers that weren't really in alignment with previous years. And then last year. We took a guess last year at fifty-two thousand, which has shown to be not a good estimation, so. We do have a slight increase in city hall, but it is in alignment with the historic trends.
When is the expected date that building to come down?
Uh, that is planned, that is planned on next summer.
I, I just can't see why. There's power to the building, they have to shut the water off and whatever, it's not gonna create a problem over a year where we could be saving money.
I can have Chuck look into. Shutting it down.
It's not gonna deteriorate that much over a year, as long as the water's shut off and shut the power off. It's coming down within a year, don't have to worry about the condition of it. I just can't see keeping it heated and stuff like that because it's costing, costing us money, it's gonna come down.
Absolutely, I'll, I'll talk to Chuck in the morning and. I'm looking at you.
Kind of saying things.
And shutting down utilities.
Well, the power's off, well, it could happen.
So on that city hall tab, it says for twenty-four, what, what was the actual? Then, cause it just says current budget and you said fifty-nine, which was not.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two. Just one moment, ma'am, it'll take me, I don't, I'll, I'll have to load up the. Holly, do you have the finance software up?
Yeah.
It's gonna take me a minute because this thing making me reset my password, of course it is.
Okay, and this is in the building part of the spreadsheet?
Correct.
City hall, city hall.
Bishop Jensen, Ward one, three-one-four Leonard Avenue. I guess some other insight I would recommend, just each ward, you guys are all looking at it as like a very large blanketed. Situation and that's respectable, but at the same time, you all have things that fall into your wards. So I think if you ward focused some and consider, you know, what you guys have to focus on for your own ward. It might help making decisions for yourselves when it comes to, you know, what you feel you're gonna vote on and cut. Cause ultimately, what falls in your ward is gonna be what people are gonna see out of you. And so if you have the fire department or the hospital in your ward, I'd expect you to, to really weigh in on the balance of the budget when it comes to those things. Or if you have majority of the parks or, or you hold the most parks out of all the wards. I would expect that you would weigh in and focus on your wards directly in such a time of critical budget function.
And yet, everyone needs a hospital.
Yes, right.
Right. So you cannot count that.
No, and, and that's part of the reason why I say this is because obviously you guys are all gonna look at this, you know, out of broader aspect, but. To alleviate yourselves of the, of the pressure of some of it and to bring yourselves more focused and channel, if you look at and identify your wards first. I think you'll be able to come up with determinations as to what's justifiable, you guys probably see more eye to eye on things even. Um, but yeah, just ward focus is important. I see a lot of broad spectrum input and identification, but it doesn't seem like a whole lot of people are concerned about their direct wards at this point. Just general observation.
They may not be.
No, you are Jeff.
Yeah, if you, if you have, if you have it ready, I, I'm, it made me reset my password.
Okay.
It's doing, making me do a thousand things.
Twenty-four, we didn't get that Tri Valley building till the end of the year, so we didn't have bills for it then. And it was twelve thousand for just city halls, but this year, year-to-date, we've already spent twenty-five thousand on utilities between our building and the Tri Valley building.
Both buildings, city hall and Tri Valley.
Yes, yeah.
That's a broken, like, we can't get like a idea of what we spent on either.
This just has service dates, so it doesn't tell me which billing is for which building, so.
Well, there's two old churches without any, he did it for years and they're not.
That's what I'm saying.
They're not crumbling yet.
You know, it's like the four and A building, that sat for years and years and years.
So.
I mean, but it's just that, like, it's under our stuff, so I mean, like, I don't know if it's like an insurance thing, like, if something happens and like that. Like, and then we're on the hook for, if somebody does something stupid in there.
Right.
City hall expense year, in twenty-four was seven, for the, for the account forty-one nine forty was seventy-nine thousand three sixty-two.
Right, but that was more than just utilities.
Yeah, that was the total city hall.
So that was significantly more than you were expecting.
Bishop Jensen, Ward one, three-one-four Leonard, uh. I think part of the justification for taking out the old Tri Valley or Polk County Bank building is because it's already. Structurally not sound and has been reinforced. Um, so given, you know. Ward two's observation as to just the general liability. I'd also like to point out that the building was built during a time of fast-paced development in the mid-century. So if we're gonna compare it to six-foot wire, six brick-wide church buildings to its one-brick-wide facade. I don't think that's really adequate in comparison to structural stability. Um, so I would just urge all the council members to keep in mind that the building is already kind of in a shambled state. And it was not designed or built with a century of use. And so, yes, it's justified in taking it down by me saying that, sure, but at the same token, I don't think that it's easily justified in just. Not maintaining in the meantime, out of concern for its simple facade structure. It is a facade structure, and so I would just urge that there is probably more liability, it is right on the corner of the highway. Um, and direct corridor of the other buildings.
Uh, just a point of order, uh, debating the rationale for taking the building down or not is not up for a discussion at this point.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, the decision to take the building down has already been made. Uh, it's just a matter of timing, so discussing the construction of the building is not pertinent at this point.
Second.
Just figured I'd share with you guys that, you know, it's just a facade, the building.
So with the city hall, uh, we'll be at seventy-eight eight without. The other improvements, uh, the capital improvements. It is anticipated the utilities will come down significantly. Once it's winterized, so that can be a line item that is addressed and I've got a note to discuss that with Chuck to winterize the building and. Eliminate if possible, any utilities.
Okay.
Which would bring us down closer to about the sixty-five thousand that is historic on that line item. That puts us through. The non-departmental. Items that are on the budget, if the council has any questions.
Can I ask a question on the mayor council one?
Yes, ma'am.
Was twenty twenty-six proposed, is that wrong or are we giving ourselves raises? Cause I don't feel comfortable with that.
Put the mayor's salary in with the council.
Oh, okay, so that wasn't in the other ones? Okay, well, that makes me feel better.
Yep.
Yeah, uh, yeah, we, uh, we had two budget line, budget sections, one for the mayor and one for the council. And those were, for ease of budgeting and clarity, we combined them because it was really just redundant information.
And the spreadsheet, the city hall, we just looked at, there are a number of items on there that don't have any dollar marks upon them.
Uh, yes.
Right, and so as an example, county land fee fees.
I'm sorry, which?
Why, why, what, it's, it's number twenty-six now in terms of. Is it, why is it in there if there's no money associated with it? Or should your money be associated with it or is it someplace else in this document?
Is this on the mayor council tab, sir?
No, it's city hall.
This is on the city hall. So, uh, this is city hall. Number twenty-six, county landfill fees, just a curiosity.
We, we have.
Reading this?
We have several line items in many of our budgets that need to be cleaned up. Uh, historically, as an example, you'll see in wage, in wages in virtually every department. We have coaches temporary, other department miscellaneous, uh, only parks and rec uses coaches. But when our, when our chart of accounts was set up, originally set up, I can't speak to when that was, how long ago that was. The tech, it was basically cut and pasted and moved through. So every department had, just at the same time, we've also tried to clean up as much as possible. Every department also has police and fire para, public employees retirement. But yet, only police and fire are eligible for it, so those, they are extraneous line items, there, they, they do need to be cleaned up. And that is something that is being worked on once we've worked through, uh, our transition to the new software, we're hoping to have that cleaned up so that. The line items that are not applicable to departments will no longer be within those departments. But generally speaking, when our chart of accounts was set up, every department was cut and pasted from one template. And so, and it's just always been that way. We have a history of zero balances as far back as it will give us a report in many areas.
Thank you. Dale, do you, are you then ushering us towards meeting every Monday now? Is that kind of what it's for this?
Is until we get through departments. But I mean, kinda in the crunch time, we gotta set our preliminary levy by the thirtieth. So I, you know, do we try to meet twice a week, meet next Monday? Maybe, I don't know, on a Wednesday?
Maybe set it for Monday and see how far you get and then leave your Wednesday open and then meet.
We could do that too.
Do we need to, at least set it for the meeting?
If we can get through a lot, have a long one next Monday, we should probably get through everything on the fifteenth.
Could we post it and then cancel it?
Yeah.
Of course.
No?
Yeah, you can.
Yeah.
Why not?
What?
Why not?
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, I think we, you know, have it posted just in case and then we can, if we don't meet. Or we try to do it, everything on the eighth and the fifteenth and then pull something week of the fifteenth.
It's all right.
So I wanna go beyond the fifteenth. I'm not, I'm gonna be out of the country now.
Were we planning on being out of the country or is this? Were we planning on being out of the country or is this?
As a matter of fact, I would.
Okay.
You can, you can check, but Tino, I did it over a year ago.
He was trying to escape the budget.
Mister mayor, members of the council, uh, the departments that require, still require going over admin, finance. Admin, finance, mayor and council, community development, police, fire, public works and parks. Uh, if it pleases the council, there are four Mondays left in September. The twenty-ninth would be the last meet, last Monday. Admin, finance, mayor and council, I believe can be done in one evening, community development, police and fire can be done in another evening. However, public works and parks are significantly larger departments, each one would have one evening each. And if you break it down as such, you can continue, you can contribute the operating budget by the end of the month.
I think that just, here's my fear of that, is if we go that way, then we don't have time and discussion on the twenty-ninth of what we may wanna do.
And if that's the case, you can all, always add the week of the eighth, the week of the fifteenth somewhere. That week you can add to an, an evening for a special meeting. So, and I would, again, I would just recommend public works and parks each be their own, because both of them are very large departments with significant line items.
Well, we could do, uh, public works or park on. Tenth, seventeenth. You know, if it's a one evening with them, the eighth is, you know, Monday and then the tenth would be a Wednesday.
Uh, I would recommend that would have to be parks, uh, I do not anticipate that Chuck will be back, uh, by the tenth.
No, Chuck, where are we going on the tenth?
Yes.
Okay. So we should just schedule. Parks for the tenth. Be on the safe side.
Scott, are you available on the tenth?
I'm checking, I should be.
I'm so sorry.
I think we can get a big one out of the way.
Yeah.
Do you wanna do some on the eighth also?
Yes, we could do.
Eighth, fifteenth.
Admin, finance, mayor and council?
Yeah. Yeah.
I was right now, yes, I'm all from Japan.
Okay, so I've got the eighth for admin, finance, mayor, council, the fifteenth would be community development, police and fire, the tenth would be parks. And that would leave, uh.
Seventeenth.
The seventeen, Wednesday, the seventeenth for public works.
That would be the last department.
Correct, that would be.
And then give us the twenty-second.
Or do you wanna do it on the twenty-second?
I'm gonna do that.
Okay.
That would give you the two additional Mondays to do.
Discuss it and set your prelim.
To clear out, to clear any issues that come through.
So then I think we also schedule for the twenty-second.
Yes, as well.
Twenty-ninth, okay.
Twenty-second and twenty-ninth.
Yep.
I'll be gone. Eighteen through the twenty-seventh.
So, that sounds good to me, other than that one.
Okay. Okay. And then I've got to, we'll send a.
Send a email.
Yeah, send out schedule. Schedule up the date.
So we'll meet. On the eighth.
Eighth, fifteenth.
So right now you're gonna be on the eighth, the tenth, the fifteenth.
Fifteenth, seventh, seventeenth, twenty-second and twenty-ninth.
Yeah.
Yep, that's it. I'll be on the road on the tenth, just. I'm gone the twenty-ninth.
But I think the twenty-ninth is kinda like a contingency.
Yeah.
We end up cancelling.
Yeah, if we need it the twenty-ninth.
But then we for sure have to set our prelim, so. Hopefully by then we'd have a pretty good idea where.
So they get sent out on?
Yes, yeah.
Eight, tenth, fifteenth. Seventeenth.
All right.
Two, three, four, five, six.
Are we good?
Okay.
Hey. Yeah, I'll get it to Ashley.
Good to go.
We're doing like five fifteen, five thirty.
Yeah, should we?
Five thirty, cause my kid has one.
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
Five thirty?
Yep.
Five thirty. Okay, that's fine.
Five thirty.
Five thirties.
Okay. All right. Someone else come for. Budget, we are adjourned, thank you.
Yeah.